All right. Good evening, this is the September four two thousand and twenty four meeting. Two thousand and twenty four meeting, joint meeting of the Board of Library Trustees and the Permanent Town Building Committee. So the first order of business is roll call.
Yep, here we go. Clairemont.
Here.
Derek's here, Fleckner.
Here.
Roach.
Here.
Secor.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Hazelton.
Here.
Karpinski.
Here.
Mahana.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Uh, let's, uh, Perkins.
Yeah.
Monks.
Here.
Patil.
Here.
Welcome, Prash.
Thank you.
And Solon.
Here.
Um, well, Walkovich.
Here.
And you? Is, did I see? Okay, yeah, did I miss anybody? Please let me know now. I was trying to do it as I saw your picture.
Kristen Lass.
Oh, yes, there you are. You're over on the side. Sorry, Kristen, I had you. Is that it? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, it's so thank you, Buffy. I'd like to remind all participants of meeting that this meeting is being recorded, so all comments either spoken or provided in the chat will become part of the public record. Um, so next order of business is the approval of minutes from the August twelfth, two thousand and twelve. August twelfth, two thousand and twenty four, um, joint meeting. Do we have a, uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion now, I believe. Do we have a second?
Second.
And who was it, the second bit?
Uh, Kristen.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, uh, so roll call for minutes of August twelfth, two thousand and twenty four.
Yep, Clairemont.
Hi.
Derek's eye, Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Abstain.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. Um, Secor.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Hazelton.
Hi.
Karpinski.
Hi.
Mahana.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
And Segowitz is not here, so. That would be ten zero zero.
Great, okay, thank you. All right, next order of business is the OPM report, so we have representatives from both CHA and Feingold Alexander here tonight, um, provide us updates on progress of the design and also the, uh, the cost opinion, so. Um, Alicia, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Tom. So I'm hoping everybody saw what I sent out and on Friday and the updates I sent out yesterday. We're gonna go through all that, so this is kind of my agenda in terms of the design update. The design team really has been working on the design. We have been focused on the estimate since, uh, you know, the estimators were focused, we've focused on reconciling the estimate since we last met with you. So in, um, the good news, uh, is that the DD, that the DD estimate for the construction line item, essentially, we're on budget. That the, on the, uh, budget, the line item on there was twenty four thousand, three hundred thirty-three and some. And the two estimates were both lower than that. And the two estimates again are, you know, the point of reconciling is not to get to the same number, but to make sure that both estimates cover the same scope and same project, so it, it's natural that they would differ some. In this case, they don't differ much. But the fantasy, um, who is sort of the estimate of record, the, the design team's estimate is at twenty-three-six. So that is right now a little lower than budget, which I'm, you know, but for me, that's on budget and it's, we're good, so I'm pleased to report that. So within the estimate on the drawings, we had asked the, the estimators to price different uh, alternates, if you will. And those, uh, those are listed below just to break out the costs, so we'd understand what the costs are, so we could talk about those points. Um, we can talk about those now, but just know that the ones that are, have the highlight on them are the ones that are sort of, uh, that I indicated as recommended by the, when, um, between the design team and myself for now, it doesn't, that's not a decision, it's just what was highlighted, so that number eighty-nine thousand is what is reflected in the hypothetical budget I sent out. So we're gonna go through this list, my, this list that's on the screen first, and then we'll look at everything in the context of the hypothetical budget.
So Alicia, if I, if I could just ask a quick question, so, so these items, these alternate items here that you listed, so these are items that came out of discussions as part of the working group meetings as the design progressed. And so these are items or whatever that were highlighted by, by either your team or the, um, Feingold team.
Yep, that, and then number three down there, the asphalt walk was one that out front was asked by, I think this committee and/or Kristen had asked just to identify those costs, so we understood what they were, and then uh, I think the last one there was the design team, so they were just separate costs that we were asked to just break out to discuss.
Okay.
But you know, it's more, um, the first one on there is to paint and recock two historic windows on level two. Uh, and then also the second one on there is the, provide new waterproofing and drainage board at the X, at the existing exterior walls. So if you think of the plan of the building, we're already having to, um, dig away pretty much on three and a half sides. One side is essentially the parking lot side, the one is obviously, sorry, for the addition is going and kind of going clockwise around. There's the sidewalk that goes along the, the north edge on the main street side. Some of that, that's where the least amount of digging up is, and then on the south side is where the patio is going. So essentially, we're already digging away from the foundation. It makes an awful lot of sense to put waterproofing, not only the, on the new building, which is carried in the estimate, but while we're at it against the existing historic building, try waterproof, to provide that waterproofing by the drainage board just to help to make sure that water is wiped away. There is a perimeter drainage system there now, but this would be um, sort of refreshing it with water, with current waterproofing and stuff. Jean, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I was just wondering if there's an item that we've talked about in the past, the building envelope commissioning, which was not part of the, um, the design contingency. I'm wondering if we should pull some money out of the construction to put into that um, line item for building envelope commissioning.
Uh, that could be, the, the building commissioning is shown on the hypothetical budget, and we'll, so we'll hit that on there. That it's, that's sort of being a recommended to item on there, but
Gotcha, thanks.
But while we're doing that, um, waterproofing drain, drainage board in a moment when we get to, um, to how to improve the EUI, which is the next paragraph, it was to add insulation at the exterior foundation, so this one would really want to be paired with the next paragraph down, so because we're already digging away. Might as well waterproof it, and while we're at it, might as well add insulation. Chris?
Sorry, maybe this point has already been addressed, but maybe a, a number of months ago, um, we were talking about drainage, and we also talked about, um, soil ventilation, so that we can ventilate any gases coming up through the soil, like if radon is coming up, uh, and I'm, and that, that was mentioned, of course, we will do that, um, a number of months ago by the architect, but I didn't know if that actually got incorporated in the plan, only because solving a radon problem at this stage is far easier than trying to solve it later on.
Yeah, no, that's an excellent point. Radon, I'm sure you all know who live in Westford. Radon and for some reason is a gas that likes to live in rock. It's a, it's a funny thing and don't ask me, but I, it's, it's not uncommon for this to be with rock. Ellen Rainville has told me that she has tested I think multiple times, and there appears to be no radon in the existing library. So based on that, that she has tested, and there is no radon at this time, there is, we don't anticipate a radon system, but that is something that we can talk about as a, as a possibility, it's you're right, now is the, is, would not be necessarily an expensive time to do it, we could certainly, um, think about adding it, but I don't, based on fact that you currently are not measuring any radon in the building.
Got it. Yeah, I appreciate that. It's a trivial cost to do it now, and if there's a future problem, it's elaborate cost, but, uh,
We can find out what that cost is, but we can.
Sure, no, I'm just glad that it's, uh, still being considered. Thank you.
No, no problem.
I imagine, Alicia, that the tests are better now than the tests that we had in the past. So if it's affordable, it might be something that we want to go ahead and test for.
Yep, I can, I can try to get a, an estimate from my, from my estimating department on what that would be. I again, it, I agree, it's not, it's not big bucks, but I will get the, I'll get the price and we can review that at the next meeting. Uh, then on there, there was the number three was replace asphalt out front. If it's a new, to, new asphalt walk, it's twenty-eight thousand. If it's a new four-inch concrete walk, it's thirty-eight thousand. It's not a decision that has to happen now. But I said I would get, um, pricing, I think there was still some thought slash hope that you're paving.
Yeah, the mitigation dollars could cover the new asphalt, would not cover the new concrete, so we just wanted to get a sense from the committees of if they prefer concrete, we wanted to get a price on it, we think that we can have the mitigation costs cover the asphalt for the twenty-eight thousand or whatever it is.
Mary Ann, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. How would it match the, um, continuation of other sidewalks that are contiguous to the library? I'm trying to picture and I can't think of what it is.
I, around the green there, they're all asphalt walks, I correct?
Yeah, the, the walkway from the granite steps of the library out front to the sidewalk is concrete, and then the sidewalk, um, that you know, goes from the library up to the church, up to Canal Drive is asphalt.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just, so just for clarification, so what did these numbers, these, these are just, this is just a sidewalk at Main Street, not the sidewalk leading up to the building?
Right, that this, the only, the one sidewalk that's not, was not carried in the project was to replace that section that runs parallel to Main Street from, you know, property line to property line.
Right, okay.
And that's what, that's what that number represents. And then the last one was the design team was essentially interested in the precast concrete seat wall in the, out in the, I think it's a children's patio, the Feingold can correct me if I'm wrong. It was more of a curiosity about which was more expensive. If there's something Feingold would like to add, feel free, Mary Ann.
Thank you again. Um, so the quick question is, I can't remember exactly where it's coming from, but when we were in the Mary Atwood Room a few months ago with the combined meeting with the historic District Commission, I believe, there was talk about the, um, removal of the granite, um, uh, large pieces. And if we were able to save them and use them for seats, so I'm trying to envision is that if they were close enough, could those granite pieces create this seat wall?
Yep, there's, uh, yes, the, potentially, the, when salvaging something like that stone, the big granite pieces, whatever it is, it can look nice on the outside, there's no knowing that once it's actually salvaged from the building during the demo process and, and put over there, it may not survive, it might, you know, it may look like utter garbage, we don't know. So the idea was that in the project, we would own something. And if we're allowed, so we, if we are allowed, you know, to, to be able to reuse those granite pieces, we would then take a, a credit back for the whatever bench we already own to be able to reuse the granite. Because the grid, it's kind of a gamble, there's no guarantees that that granite will work or look nice. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
Sure. So, um, in terms of those alternates, the three blue highlighted ones are the ones that are being recommended uh, to be accepted as alternates. We don't have to, um, vote on that at this time, we, I think we should look at it as a content, in the whole context, but does anybody have any questions about any of those under the sort of alternates paragraph that's on there?
Alicia, be clear again whether these alternates exist, it, do these funds already exist in the hypothetical budget?
They do, the highlighted ones do exist in the hypothetical budget, yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
So could we vote on those highlighted ones?
I'd rather sort of discuss each one and then review the hypothetical, um, budget, which I was making, inserting assumptions and recommendations in there, just so we'd have something in context to discuss, so this is only one piece of the whole thing, so I think I wanna hang, hang on for that, because there's more sort of financial decisions in there. Any other questions about that alternates? At, okay, so the next sort of paragraph is the EUI. Um, I don't want to get too caught up in this, because this was what, I wanted to try and stay focused on the money part, but I will give you the update that they ran the EU, the energy model on the project to establish the EUI. And it, we had a, as you recall, reported that last time, and we, uh, had a separate meeting with the, uh, sorry, reported that the working group, we had a meeting with the group, working group to talk about recommendations that in reviewing options, we met with the engineers to say what are things that we could do to the project that would help lower the EUI. And those options that were, um, that are listed there, those four options were discussed. I will say that, that there were options that um, originally, we were at a, the report was shared as an EUI of twenty-seven, which was a little higher than the goal of twenty-five. So that was what was prompting the conversation. Um, to get it, to, to try and lower it down, uh, right away, there were things like, okay, we know that we're, the idea was to replace all the nineteen eighty-six windows with double pane, modern, high-performance windows. I think there was also, um, I forgot, we just did to, we just folded that in, there was also the, um, so that's already in full, sorry, that to replace all the windows is already was automatically included into the calculation, and that has since helped lower the EUI a little bit more, but, but we're doing well on the EUI ultimately, is my point, but when we met to re, to review it, again, the highlighted little, uh, squares on there, if you can pin down just a little bit more, there's more to that paragraph, Tom, there you go. There were things that the group that met about the UI recommended to accept um, to, that would cost money to invest and add money to the construction cost, but would help contribute to lowering the EUI. And those were, and we were trying to go for the best bang for the buck, and those, the, just, I'm gonna read down through them. The first one was to increase the thickness under the slab. There's a cost of that to help, you know, the insulating underneath the building. Increase thickness of the insulation on the flat roofs. Increase the thickness of the insulation at the existing attics. And add rigid insulation at the exterior of the foundation walls, and I had mentioned that earlier. And that, that, um, the existing annex was seen to be sort of like the kind of the most vulnerable space because it's existing, and so it seemed like, and seemed like the smartest place to invest a little bit more money to add a little bit more insulation in that um, in that more vulnerable area. That was one of the recommendations that, you know, where, where do we invest our money, and that was one that the engineer had recommended. The other options were about, we were looking at window modifications. One was to reduce the height of the curtain wall and that big wide, a big expansive glass that faces the parking lot. If we just reduce that a little bit on the, um, height, then, um, that would be, help a little bit, we're just looking to shave little places. And then to eliminate the operable windows in public spaces, so that within the, the library space itself, that there would be, the public couldn't operate windows, that helps mechanically, that doesn't, when windows are left open, that can really stress out mechanical systems, and it also can, um, that was a recommendation to help with the lower the EUI, and then the last one, they, no one on the committee really entertained. Chris?
Um, I'll throw my name in the hat for two B to eliminate operable windows, uh, for all the reasons you mentioned, plus also, um, reduce water entry, reduce humidity problems, reduce condensation problems, and reduce cost of the windows. Thank you.
And it, we're not, this section that we're talking about, the EUI is not really about, we're looking to, to that second part, especially about the windows, we're not looking to save money, the savings isn't, we're looking for the EUI saving, we're looking more, that's where a little bit more focused on. Jean, sorry.
Um, at the last working group meeting, I thought you said that, that the engineers were gonna run the EUI for each of these items to, so that we could make a decision, an educated decision based on how much we're saving in EUI.
The, we have not, the issue was, they did rerun the model, we have not formally presented that to anybody, it came in late Friday, so I wasn't trying to complicate things, but they did run it, the model has improved, and it is showing that we're at, um, I believe we're at twenty-five uh, without even, they didn't do it with the insulation, so.
So what you're saying is that the, the rerun did not include these options, and we're on target for EUI. And technically, the reason that we were looking at these options was to help the EUI, but we don't have that problem anymore. Is that correct?
Yes, the, the group that ran it did run it with, I think, the windows, the window options, but not the insulation up, they.
That would be really useful to know, because if we could get, if we can, you know, it's, it's all money now or money later.
Yep.
Um, and we just need to be educated on what it is that we're voting for tonight.
I agree, I will let Feingold perhaps address that if they know, have sharper information on that, but the even though, yay, we're at twenty-five, I still am gonna push to a little more, so we have a little bit more wiggle room and a little bit more buffer, because we're not done with the design, right, we're not there yet, so.
And we're also, you know, down to within ten percent of the goal, and who knows what the accuracy of this modeling is, we might be in the noise. So we're set to be, you know, to Jean's point, be very careful that, uh, whatever dollars that we spend or dollars that we wish to save, we know that we're gonna make that up in the UI.
Well, the energy reports also make it very clear that there are assumptions that they're making, assumptions about hours, assumptions about, um, you know, when, when mechanical systems come on and when they turn off and how many hours they run, so and they say, you know, on page one, those assumptions can have a, um, dramatic impact on the EUI number, so, um, these were the four things that the library working group recommended, and you know, since the group meets again a week from tonight, uh, potentially we'll be able to see the energy report as part of the packet for next week, Alicia, and then we'll know if there's a savings of thirty thousand dollars somewhere, you know, that we can take advantage of.
Beth, you had a question?
Well, you know, I, 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 I would just like to say, I put my hand up before Ellen spoke and before Chris spoke, and I agree with the statements that they made. And also just reminding everybody that the Mass Save goal is twenty-five and, um, and that's money, you know, it, like, we want to make sure that we get that Mass Save money, so it could be, um, savings, whichever way you look at it, savings or additional cost, if we don't hit that twenty-five, we need a little leeway, as others have said.
Beth, I thought the last meeting, we said that, someone said that the Mass Save EUI was thirty.
No, it's twenty-five.
Okay.
The contract that the town, well, I'll let Alicia speak.
I believe, I, I liaise on the co, 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 obviously, can you confirm that? I think it's thirty-two, Jean.
Yes, so thirty is the recommendation from Mass Save, that is the top bar that you need to be under. I do believe to the discussion that Beth was alluding to, there is a contract with Mass Save and the town of Westford that identifies that twenty-five as a goal. So it's important to understand that it's the goal, and it is something that the various committees on this call have been working towards all along, it's something we're still, um, trying to hit, think that we can hit. Um, but the letter of the Mass Save requirement is thirty.
And we're meeting with Mass Save tomorrow, um, or Thursday, yeah, tomorrow, so we'll get solid information and review all this with, with Mass Save as well.
Great. Can you also just clarify how much on the curtain wall, how much would you be reducing the height?
Six inches. So visually, it's really not any impact, it's some cost savings, which as Alicia said, was not the goal of this exercise, but it's always nice where we can save a little bit of money. Um, and then, um, sorry, and it does help the EUI every little bit of reduction in the perimeter and in the amount of glass helps our EUI, so that one seems like a go-ahead for everyone, because visually it really had no impact when we, when we tested it, and it was a woman giving us good returns for the EUI and the cost.
Right, we were just looking to, if we just found a couple areas to shave a little bit off, that would help lower it, right, that's what we were, we were trying to do.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So like, so the next.
I'm assuming, if I could just butt in, so, so C, I'm assuming is not something that your group recommended?
I, I'm still, the highlighted ones, I'm still advocating and are included in the uh, hypothetical budget, but it can be a group decision, and we can certainly, I mean, um, I, I don't think that decision has to happen tonight, but we don't want it dragging on either, so. Ellen, and Sol?
I, I, um, it's just, Leah, can you confirm, is that the highlighted items in the, in the model that has been run?
Some of them are and some of them aren't, so the window modifications were ones that we had been discussing as a design team with our modelers for a while, so they had gone ahead and run those for us um, ahead of the conversation with, um, the working group last, so reducing them in curtain wall and replacing the operable windows with fixed are ones that had already been included, as were the replacement of the nineteen eighties windows. Uh, the other modification that they had made per recommendations from BLW were all related to set points of when systems were turned on, especially in unoccupied spaces. So with these four highlights, um, the increased insulation has not been reflected yet, but the window modifications have been.
And again, we're just, it, we're looking to just, you know, shave little bits off, a little bit, little bit, to help, you know, to slowly, slowly, I don't think the insulation is gonna drop us ginormously, but it will help, and it will just help us move in the downward, you know, to a lower EUI, so we have a little bit more buffer. That's all. That's why it's being recommended.
Great.
Uh, so are there any other questions about the EUI? Again, we're gonna, uh, the working group will review the revised report next week, and then we'll have one, you know, about mid CDs, which we will also review again, would, and the more facts that go into the energy model and that replace assumptions, presumably the, are the number will again inch down a little bit, so that's what we're, we could continue to go down as they're replaced with facts, so this isn't our last time to review the model, but these are things that are, we're trying to manage it at, at every stage, if that makes sense.
Good.
All right, so the next sort of paragraph on here is the generator. They, I will just say that the current construction estimate uh, does include a generator. Uh, there has, but I will, Henry, the. Uh, there has, but I will, Henry, the building commissioner is strongly encouraging slash recommending, requiring that he would really like to see a generator be put on this building. And that's uh what he would like, I will just report that it is not required by code. The code does allow to have a battery operated elevator. His Henry's concern is very much about the elevator, he, I guess there was a specific concern that he was came across in town. The elevator by code needs to have enough power wherever it is to drop to the lowest safe floor and the doors open. And that is what's required, so elevators will have a a battery with um as part of the uh as part of the elevator, so it meets code if you're not attached to a generator to allow it to drop and doors open. Henry is not comfortable with that and he would like a generator to make sure that the for the elevator, Ellen?
So I just want to clarify um what both Henry's and um Jeff Goodwin would be saying this if he were here tonight as well, their concern is not so much about the elevator, but that a disabled person or a wheelchair bound person cannot safely get out of the building unless they're in that elevator at the time the power goes out and the elevator is descending. So one of the things that we were asking Fine Gold Alexander for is the cost of an elevator that can be recalled to another floor even though the power has gone out. Um, both Jeff and Henry were aware in the schools of an episode, or I guess I should say a circumstance, you know, where the power was out and someone was not able to get out of the building without the help of the fire department. So it's really a safety issue and you know, one of the unknowns, I think at this point, is whether there's an alternative elevator that despite a power outage can be recalled to the second or the third floor just in case someone is stuck on that floor at the time the power goes out. So we, you know, until we know that cost, we can't really compare it to a full generator cost for the building.
Yep, um, Chris?
Uh briefly, I I appreciate and agree with all the safety concerns, I'm also you know, speaking of an episode or an incident of when the power went out for a week, um about ten fifteen years ago, and so I my concern is just the building doesn't freeze up for not having heat for that long, so um that would be my motivation to have a generator, thank you.
Okay, so, oh, Beth, uh well, I just want the options, we can talk about the options, but Beth, yep.
Well, unfortunately, right now on the screen, we have, uh you had prices on the screen, right?
Yeah, there are options that, you know, the option is to have, there are different options, one is to have no generator which will, everything in for life safety is addressed by battery, that is, that is one option, that is code compliant. That is one option, the second option that's listed on there is just basically have a battery big enough that would allow the elevator to cycle a couple times in the event of no power, the initial pricing that we were able to get is pricing that more than the cost of a generator, so I see that as a not a contender. And then.
Excuse me, which one did you say? Did you say the elevator battery upgrade was more than a full generator?
That was the initial, um, you know, we asked for order of magnitude pricing and that's what we as of this afternoon, the pricing that we received, it was more than a generator, it's a it's a big battery to be able to do that and those are expensive.
And there's lifecycle costs with that too, whereas you don't know how many years that battery will last.
Right, there's, so that it is an option, but at this time I don't think it's favored due to cost and we, and you know, we've fine gold and myself were trying to with my estimators and everybody trying to figure out what that system is and the cost and the initial, you know, order of magnitude appears to be more money than a generator. So, then if.
Does that mean it's more than a quarter million dollars, Alicia?
Yes.
I, I guess I like, well, wh- when do we have to uh make this decision on whether or not to have the whole building generator?
Um, I yeah, I think that's one of those, it would be good to have tonight, but if you can scroll to the next page, Tom?
Yep.
Thank you, then the other options are to have a generator, one would be to the connection to the roll up, which in initial conversations, no one was really loving that. Uh, sorry, so there's three, there's the connection to the temporary roll up, no one was loving that, but it is an o- an option. Uh, the other one would be to have a partial generator, which would be to, it would uh be a hundred kilowatt, it would cover the elevator, heating, fire suppression, emergency lighting, essential lighting, that comes at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars and then a full building, everything, hundred and fifty kilowatt would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so those are the elevator options, I mean, sorry, generator, uh sorry, generator options. And I think as a group, you all have to decide if you want a generator or not, and if you do, is it a full um, building or a partial building, that you all have the facts and I think that's something that you all as a committee should probably vote on. Ellen and so I mean.
Alicia, thanks, um, the, we really need to know is like, if we could vote on this, we, the group can vote on this tonight because the location of the uh generator will affect the landscaping and we're hoping to start that RCD phase, um, we're hoping to get a send off on that tonight or shortly. So that that I just wanted to put that plug in.
And I'll just add one thing before we go to Jean and then Beth is that this price does not include the eighteen something for the design. That's, yeah, the nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the design team to for the electrical engineer to perform this work. Jean?
Uh, we've been kicking this can down the road for it seems like months, I'd say that I I'd like to just put on the table to vote tonight on the two hundred and fifty thousand three hundred plus the nineteen thousand eight hundred and just get it into the project now and then decide what to do with the rest of the money.
Okay. Um, I I'm gonna listen to Beth and then maybe we'll other comments and then if I'll come back to you, Jean, perhaps if you want to make a motion, does that sound fair? Beth?
Yeah, I guess what I'm concerned about is setting a precedent, this would certainly set a precedent for the library, right now, we do not have a full built, a full uh building generator and um, I think it also sets a precedent for any other building that we're going to do in town that now it isn't only the shelters that need to be able to run fully during an electrical outage, but that that is now a requirement for any building in town and I I feel I know that there's reasons that the architect might want to move forward, but I'm not sure that uh we're fully explored, what the other options are to make sure the elevator is safe and we need safety, of course, but I don't know if the town during these tough times believes that we need to be able to run our uh library you know, full time during a cu- a power outage and you know, maybe people in town would feel that we should be able to get everybody out safely people can go home and come back when the electricity is back on, so I'm not sure we're fully explored the safety options and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money, not only for this project, but every project, I think in town moving forward will have to bear that standard, um, so that's my concern. And it has nothing to do with clean energy, it's more, I'm saying this as a resident of town.
Okay, um, Kristen?
Yeah, thank you, um, my question is for the architects related to um electricity usage for the building and and pipes freezing and whatnot and would a full, you know, we would have to turn the water totally off if we're seeing an extended outage, so I definitely understand Beth's um concerns and rationale and agree, you know, if we do not have to do a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense for this project and setting precedent, but I'm also concerned about our risk related to insurance claims and pipe bursts and those types of things, so I'd like um the architects to speak to that if they wouldn't mind especially because this building is going to be fully electrified and we won't have a gas generated heat source.
Alicia, I'll say a couple of words, maybe Leah will in or Jean wants to chime in, but the um, so just we have never done a generator generator at a library, but we've never done a library in Westford and we know you guys have a lot, you're in the snow belt, right? So you you do have these outages. But what we've done before, and I I know Ellen called the director in Stoughton, we put in the um connection for a roll up generator and that that was probably done ten years ago and the new director didn't even know he had it because they didn't need it. But uh i- and I think Beth, we did and Alicia did a lot of legwork with her estimating group, getting some numbers, numbers together for the options, so my opinion is, we we have vetted these options and and Alicia's got some really good numbers for them. But i- at a minimum, you folks may want to consider the um connection for the temporary generator in in terms of how long will things freeze up and I know uh uh Alicia has mentioned this. The buildings now are much more insulated than they were, I I can't tell you if how long it will be till they till something freezes. And I I we can, we can, um, I think we have asked that of the um, the uh engineers, Leah, do you recall that?
I I don't know if we have an exact, like, how long could it hold, but I think that's really the crux of the question is how long, how prolonged of an outage do you want to plan for, if it's couple hours, couple days, to Ellen's point, yes, this building is far more insulated than any that have been or the most have been done in the past, so it will hold the heat and it will perform and it will protect the pipes longer than in in the past, so if we're just talking about a short outage then the the pipe should more or less be safe, if it's a prolonged one, there are options to drain the water if that's a concern, no, I know nobody wants to do that, but that that is an option and that also gives you more time if you did want to do the roll up generator option, if you know it's, you know, it's already been out for five days it does give your contract um with that generator company some more time to get to the building, because I know that was a concern in the past is that if it's not there immediately and the power goes out um, how long is it gonna be before a generator becomes available and comes on site? So that doesn't address the safety concern with the elevator, but if we're just talking about um pipes freezing um, there's, there's a little more protection there just in the way that the building's designed.
Yeah, there's also two types of plumbing, there's a fire protection, there's a domestic water, so those two can uh be dealt with differently.
Right, um.
I was just gonna ask that, uh on the fire protection, sorry to uh cut ahead of the other two that are at their hands up, but is is it, is this a dry system in the attic?
Yes, in the attic currently it is dry and there is potential that if that's really a concern that you could do a dry system for the entire building and not have to worry about that as a concern and it would just be the domestic water.
That's very expensive.
Yeah, that would end cost.
But it's, but it's like in the, it's well over a hundred thousand dollars or more to do that, it doubles the fire protection number which I can look up right now, because I thought that would be easy decision and and it's not, it was still real money. Sorry.
Lynn and then Chris.
Yep.
Uh, my question is, are there any ADA requirements on having a working elevator at all times?
Yes.
So how could we pass uh with during a power outage?
Oh, well, during a powder outage, then the building's not legal, I I mean, no, during a power outage, you're not the only requirement is that in a power outage, the elevator drop and the doors open, there's, you you have to be able to get people out and that's the idea is that the elevator doors close, drops and then the doors open and.
Does it automatically drop or do, is it take one trip down so you can get people out?
I believe it take, I believe it automatically drops.
I don't understand how it works for someone in terms of ADA, yeah.
I I understand that that was, that's a specific incident that happened in town and I'm not dismissing it, I'm just telling you what is.
That is a lot, okay, so there's no requirement, okay.
Chris?
Chris?
Appreciate all the creative solutions, you know, draining the water out and and figuring all these ways to deal with extended outage, but at the end of the day, it's a um a facilities department problem, they're they're the ones that um Jeff's the one that's gonna have to enact whatever we come up with, and so I think that um, it's really a function of what the facilities department's policies are for maintaining buildings through ex- extended outages and um, I think that having Jeff's input to this is critical, is representing the department that's actually gonna have to enact this plan that that uh we're gonna propose, thank you.
Thanks, Chris, and and what, you know, one other comment I was gonna add, kind of a little bit on top of what Beth had said, I mean, I'm I'm personally in favor of the generator, I just don't feel that I I, well, I guess I should say it could, maybe this could be directed to Ellen and to the trustees, but it's not, it's my understanding that you know, if we did have an extended power outage, you know, we're not looking to have this a can you can you continue to have this thing as an operating, you know, facility during a during a power outage and it's not being designed to to become a, you know, emergency shelter, if I if I understand right, so um so I, you know, so I just, I just wanted to throw that out there that, you know, I think we're um, I, you know, I'd be in favor of, you know, providing, you know, a backup generator that will be, you know, all of the those you know, emergency systems, the elevator, the heating and and um, you know, essential lighting and emergency lighting. Ellen and then Kristen?
So I I just have um, so I will comment, um, no, we're not really looking for the library to become an emergency shelter, but if we have heat lighting, the ability to charge your phones, wifi and the ability to use the internet, then we would really be providing an emergency function, you know, apart from shelter. Um, I guess my question that I need Alicia to answer is, is the generator design cost of almost twenty thousand does that apply to both three B and three C? If if we have any generator, is there still a twenty thousand dollar design cost?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Kristen? Um, can you remind us what the, right now, what the cost of the yearly subscription is for the temporary generator? So it's, you know, we pay it upfront or we pay it throughout? No, 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 if we were to do the connection to the temporary roll up generator, what is the yearly cost of that?
I I did not actually research that because at the first meeting, really no one thought that was a bright idea, I just, I did list it as an option, I'm sorry, did not look into what annual agreements would be. I I kind of, I left it as an option, but I really, I didn't, my sense was that that no one really thought that was a viable option, I apologize.
So I'm just thinking of it as, you know, if we did the full build, we're paying the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I would say upfront, but it's spread out over the course of the twenty year bond. Or with the temporary roll up generator, we're paying the seventy, seventy-two thousand over the course of twenty years, what would we be paying on a subscription basis? Does it just cost the same amount? Um, I don't know.
Well, the the subscription would be forever, right? There's no end to it, whereas by the generator theoretically after twenty years, not maintenance aside um, twenty, after twenty years it would be paid for, Beth?
Well, yeah, I don't totally understand that, we may, we put in a connection for a temporary roll up generator for seventy-two thousand and then we pay a subscription or we pay when we need to use it and we don't have that cost in honestly, seventy-two thousand is quite a bit different than two hundred and fifty thousand and we don't know that, um. I I again, I'm just worried about the climate in town right now, the, this is a two hundred and fifty dot thousand dollar expense and it's actually adding a new uh requirement that we don't have right now and I'm not sure the town would say we want the library to be a shelter, it's, it's, my question is, we don't seem to have a full understanding and um, it's a big expense.
Ellen and then Glenn?
So, um, you know, one of my concerns about the roll up generator, we would have to have a maintenance agreement with a company, we would probably have to pay a certain amount quarterly, whether we call them in or not, I'm guessing about that, I'll investigate this with Alicia. Um, my concern is, you know, how long does it take for the roll up generator to get delivered? You know, if you've had. You know, if you've had a hurricane of thirty eight and the trees are down everywhere and the power lines are down everywhere and it's impossible to get around, you're not going to have a roll up generator delivered. Um, and I think uh my, my other concern um, is, you know, if there is, you know, a town wide or regional wide emergency, you know, gas explosions across Merrimack Valley. Um, your facility personnel, and we have a limited supply of these, you know, are going to be dealing with emergencies at multiple buildings, you know, whether it's a power outage or, or whatever. So I, I think we, I I know you want to vote on this tonight, but I, I think we've heard, you know, what Henry wants and we've heard what Jeff wants. And um, you know, the, there's only, you know, twenty one thousand dollars difference between a partial building generator and the full building generator. So that doesn't seem like such a bargain to me. So um, you know, I'm just, I don't know, I guess, you know, what I'm hearing from Ellen is, you know, we couldn't make this an alternate in the bid. It's something we would have to be designing for, but um.
No, I don't think so. No, no, that's not what Ellen said. I don't want to speak for Ellen, but, but, but we certainly, we do, Ellen, I do that all of the time on my projects. We put generators, design them in as alternate items.
We, we could do, we, it's complicated. We could do that. You'd still be paying the engineering cost. But no, I, I, and we'll do whatever you guys, whatever you prefer. We, we, you know, our engineers are are willing to do either one. It's whatever's best for Westford. Every town's different.
Okay, thank you. And Glenn?
Okay, so um, I I wonder if there isn't a difference between a precedent and a requirement? If we were to uh, to install a, a whole building generator in the library. Certainly other projects going forward might say, well, you did it for the library. You should do it for, for this one. But is the library space because of the public usage different than would be the case for most other um, public buildings? So I don't know whether we're really setting a um, a requirement or or a precedent that could or could not be um followed. Um, secondly, I agree, Ellen, with what I think you were saying, that the partial building option doesn't really seem to make a lot of sense. In terms of Kristen's question about the uh, the subscri- subscription cost of the roll up generator, I'd like to know that before we vote on this to find out, you know, how viable or economical that option is. I wouldn't worry so much about catastrophic weather events and not someone not being able to get it to us, um, as, as I would be just, is it economical? And finally, Alicia, on that point, he said that um, the roll up generator subscription is forever. But the um, the whole building generator is just for twenty years. Well, it isn't because at the end of twenty years, you're replacing it. Um, so you're starting a whole new cost recovery cycle on a um, on a new generator. So from my part, I would, I would just say unless the temporary roll up generator is just not an economical option, I think that's a smarter um, choice for this project, but if we're gonna vote on it tonight, then I guess that's how I'd be voting.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Um, and then one other quick comment, I just want, want to make sure that consider if we're going to, you for for any type of generator, um, in addition to all those other items that the generator would power, don't forget about the wastewater uh, power needs. This is gonna have a small, I'm assuming small ejector station to connect to the uh sewer pump station uh, or to the municipal sewer system. So that would need to definitely be uh connected backup power. All right, uh Caroline, I think we haven't heard from you, so we'll give that to you and I think we've pretty much covered all the bases on this.
Just a quick question, um, the full and partial generators, what is the lifespan or life expectancy of these systems?
I mean, I could speak from, you know, from, from my personal experience with generators on, on types of projects I, I'm involved in. They, you know, you could fully expect them to last twenty, twenty-five years. It all depends on, it all depends on how regularly they're maintained, they're serviced and how, and how much they use. I mean, gen- standby generators and for these types of facilities do not get a lot of use, but they are, they are um, or they recommended that they be exercised on a, on a weekly basis so that they are continuing to be operated. And that, um, and I think Glenn did also mention too that, you know, if we do put in a generator here, they, that would become uh, part of the town's uh service contract that they have on, when all the other generators, so. Um, but you, you could expect, you, you should expect that a generator, particularly of this size, these are not big generators when it comes to these types of facilities. They should last easily twenty, twenty-five or more years. Lynn, anything new to add?
Yes, just because Ellen's here and has been at the library so long. Have you ever lost power while the library was open to the public?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes. So we have a power outage procedure and a power outage policy. And you know, at the moment, because there's no generator and no backup, um, we if, if we don't see power restored in twenty minutes, we begin to escort the public out of the building because the emergency lights last for about a half an hour. You know, we have to get the public out of the building while we still have emergency lighting and while the exit lights are being led. And um, and then, you know, we have to go back when, when power comes back on, we go back to the building. And you know, yes, the um, the blizzard of seventy-eight and um, other times we've had, you know, uh, extended days without library service because of lack of power. But I don't think, you know, I just want to loop back one more time and say, you know, waiting for a roll up generator to be supplied to us because we now expect an extended time without power still does not address the concern that both Henry and Jeff were um, sharing with us, that someone might not be able to get in the elevator or be in the elevator at the time power was lost and therefore could not get out of the building.
But have you had any big problems, Ellen, over the past thirty years? What, I mean, have pipes, have you had any major issues during?
We've had frozen pipes in my experience, yes. We've had, um, you know, we, 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 we have a uh, we, we have a policy where we run the faucets, you know, when we have a certain, we have a sub-zero procedure, so we run faucets, you know, even if we're open to the public and we run them overnight. So yes, we've had um, burst pipes both in a wall and in a bathroom. And um, and I think my, one of my big concerns now, I'm not trying to sway the group, I'm just being realistic. I, I think we're going to continue to have more extreme weather. So I think that, you know, that is something to plan for.
Nancy.
The original Nancy.
Nancy the first.
There we go. I understand Henry's concern and wanting the elevator and the full building generator. But if the elevator doors close and the elevator drops when they lose power, how do they get from one end of the second floor to the elevator before it goes down? Something, something doesn't make sense. There has to.
They can't. That's what he's saying. They're stranded on the second or third floor because the elevator automatically drops. Our elevator has this now. We have a descend battery. And if we, if we lose power, the elevator box automatically drops to the bottom floor and the doors kind of agitate open and like this, you know, just enough so that you can get out. But if you weren't in the elevator, the instant the power failed, there's no way you can get down if you're in a wheelchair or if you have a child in a stroller.
And we don't have any ramps built into the new building for them to come down. Everything is only by elevator?
Well, there's stairs, yeah. Um, so the fire department has a special um, expensive, you know, um, carrying chair. And, and this was what happened with the episode at the schools. They, they have to have, you know, a four team, four man team or person team would be more correct. Four person team, you know, go and physically carry the person down the stairs. So um, no, but you know, we, we have emergency stairwells, we have the elevator and um.
Thank you.
So I guess what I'd hear, uh, but, oh, uh, Jean?
Jean, anything new?
Yeah, I just want to ask, um, did we, what, did I hear correctly that our facilities director and our building inspector both want a generator, a full generator? And aren't they the people in our town that should be directing us on this topic? And, and therefore the townspeople need to understand that our building inspector and our facilities director both feel that we need a generator and that's one way of looking at it. That's all I have to say.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of people that have different opinion, have, have, have opinions on it. So I guess it all comes down to who makes the call.
I guess um, what I'm hearing, Tom, and you can tell me if I'm wrong. I think that we should have a vote about whether there's a generator or not. And then at the next meeting, we can give, uh, we can get the cost for the subscription and then we could decide what kind of generator it is. If it's a roll up generator, we'll get those subscription costs or we can decide if it's a full or partial. I, I, you, I mean, just to try and keep.
Well, I, I think um, since we're meeting a week from tonight, it seems to me if we came back next week with the cost of the roll up generator and if we understood from Henry, if our occupancy permit is going to be contingent upon a full building generator, then we have that direction and we should incorporate it into the budget. Um, I don't know that he's seen that we're looking at three different options. So maybe we have to meet with Henry before next Wednesday night and, you know, ask if any of these other options. Again, they would have to address his safety concerns, not just, you know, the provision of continued electrical power.
True.
But I think.
But he's also, he, he enforces the code, so. I guess we're in this kind of this gray area here where we, you know, we're, we're kind of going outside of the requirements of the building code.
And can our engineer advise us, being an expert in this area versus us trying to guess?
Advise you in terms of?
What to do with the generator, what he, what that engineer sees that we do in other, that they do in other buildings and similar facilities? So that uh, I assume that they have the domain expertise to tell us what the solution is because they've solved this problem before.
I don't know if they have a specific thing, though what I've heard is not required by code. This is an elective decision by the town and libraries generally don't have generators, but that doesn't mean anything for Westford. This is a, a Westford specific decision.
So maybe, maybe it makes sense to just postpone this one more week. And then hopefully we can go back and have a quick, you know, decision vote. I don't think we need to spend another hour rehashing all of the options again.
But I think everybody did.
How much, how much of this, does this hold you, hold the team up? We just take a generic vote on yes, generator, no, but I mean, how binding is that?
Well, the um, I, I don't know. I want to be able to get, we have to get their additional service approved, which we can have part of the next meeting. And you know, just to be able to have the electrical engineer start all that and then we can figure out where. But, you know, we just, I want to keep things moving. Cause I want to be able to give them permission to proceed with construction documents tonight uh, to the next phase of, of the design process to keep it moving again.
Okay, all right, just maybe just what we can do then is, uh, does somebody want to make a motion? To take a vote on whether to um, to include a generator, not, not specific type of generator, just to include a generator. The vote would be, so if you vote yes, that means you're in favor of bidding a gen- a standby generator for the facility, not just a plug to, to connect, to connect in, but an actual generator.
We were gonna get pricing on the standby though, right? We were gonna find out what it would cost to have a connector with a standby.
It, if we, Beth, if we, if this committee chooses that they don't want a generator, we don't want to spend the two hundred and thirty or fifty, whatever it is, a hundred, a hundred fifty K, but it doesn't matter. The minimum, the minimum we're gonna provide. Well, I, no, I guess that's not true. I would say the minimum is that we would still provide. All right, so maybe the motion should be that we provide provisions for a generator.
Aren't we gonna need a location? Aren't we gonna need a location for generator anyway? Isn't that what she's asking? Because she wants to do her landscape. So, I mean, it's a no brainer, whether it's the roll up generator that's gonna come, roll up and plug in, or whether we're going to have one permanently somewhere near the building. Logically, it's going to be very similar in location.
I mean, correct me if I'm, I'm getting a sense from this, from this group and maybe we gotta take a vote anyway. But I, I get in a sense that we're all on the same page that we need some, some form of a generator for the building.
But I, but I think we do need to check on the, on the prices and the information. Two hundred and fifty thousand plus the yearly maintenance plus in twenty years, we're gonna buy a new one versus seventy two thousand versus times what is it gonna cost us if, to have a contract with United Rental or somebody to come bring us one?
So I understand the concern is to keep the CDs rolling, so just for the sake of keeping the CDs rolling, why don't we just say the architects shall provide
A location.
For a possible generator and then we solve the, we delay the, the decision of the specifics, but we just unblock them to say, yes, please prepare, provide enough square footage and ventilation and fire um, requirements um, for the.
Was that a motion?
Too many words to be a motion, but um, I would say that, um, but I propose that uh, I move that we um, enable the architects to provision uh, temporary, uh, a, a possible location for a generator um, in the site plan, just to keep construction documents moving forward.
Yes, I just want to add one thing, uh, it's not just landscape because I mean, PFP, they have to design the uh, if there's a generator or no generator, it's totally, totally different uh, electrical designs. So they were beginning the CD process, we would like to know if there is a generator involved or no generator, because that's two different routes.
So Jing, if there is a generator that's a roll up uh, versus a generator that is stationary, is it's the same electrical design?
I don't know the answer. I can check with our, uh, with Daki, our electrical engineer.
The difference would be how it's being fueled, you know, it's still providing the same electrical supply to the building. It's the difference is, you know, a temporary roll up generator is gonna be diesel fueled, it's gonna be self-contained. Um, and a permanent, permanent fixed generator, standby generator is gonna be, is gonna be natural gas fueled.
Tom, can you go back to the page that has the three generator options?
This, it's the top of that page, there you go.
Okay.
And at the top, it does say natural gas or diesel, but I, we'd also previously talked about, we're doing it, have a natural gas one, hook up to the line of street and you never have to worry about it. Where, yes, it would be.
The motion is provision space in the landscape and provision space inside the, the building for a transfer switch for a potential generator.
Nancy, you want to sell some oil for the generator?
I'm retired.
I'm retired.
Oh, that's right.
I think we got Nancy Cook the second with her hand up.
She cooked the first, oh, she, no, she's, she's also.
No, who's that?
Why, why is your, what? Keep going up.
Is Mike Patton, uh, um.
I did join, but it's showing me as Nancy for some reason. No, no, because you.
No, it's a long story, Mike.
Oh, Mike. Okay, I'm changing it now. I do have one, um, just note on the generator, um. Just to clarify in relation to the design, because I have some experience with generators, so. If we're gonna have some form of a generator in the electrical design, the engineer will have to design a transfer switch. Um, in order to be able to transfer power from the main switch gear to the generator. So however that generator gets installed, it wouldn't be too important. Uh, to know what it's going to be, other than just making the provision, whether it's roll in or permanent. Otherwise, the infrastructure should stay the same, more or less. The other option you could do is if you want to get this going and not affect the MEP design. Because there's a lot of considerations you have to make, even on the mechanical side, if you're gonna involve the VRF system in this. You could simply just progress the design for the site plan to identify the location. And you could do this as a, as an ASI or as an addendum through the pre-construction process. As long as you identify the need for the generator before construction starts, there shouldn't be any more cost for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it's, I, the. I think the committee should still decide, do you want a generator or not? And then how it gets, how it happens, whether it's a roll up or a, um. We can review that at our, when the joint committee meets again, the working group meets in a week, but the joint committee. Who would need to vote on it doesn't meet until the sixteenth, so that's a week and a half away. We can get those numbers and you can decide at that time about the investment. That would be required, but it's whether you want a generator or not.
I think I don't, I don't think anybody doesn't want a generator.
Well, I, that's what I was asking, like, let's just get that one decision made, get a vote, decide we want a generator or not. And then the next decision would be how much generator, what kind of generator? And and I'm hearing that really not even making an alternate, if you make a decision to have a generator, you're making the decision to have the generator. What's to be decided is to do the financial model of the roll up and. Spread over twenty years or the initial buying a permanent one.
With all that that entails for twenty years.
Yes.
The only thing I'll say is the, the electrical engineer needs to know the size in order to design the generator, so if we give direction to do one, they're gonna need to know. Which switch gear, how to wire the switch gear depending on the kilowatt draw. So if we're deciding generator as a group, we should know what size we need to, otherwise the electrical engineer may have questions. Just something they consider.
Right, full building or partial building is basically it. They gave us the proposed side of a hundred kilowatt or a hundred and fifty kilowatt. Those sizes came from the engineers.
Yep.
Cool.
Um, if I could just make one note on that too, is that is really the biggest difference as far as the electrical design. There isn't too much difference inside the building between providing a generator, a full building generator or the roll up. But if you go for the half option, that's where there is more, um. More design involved because they actually have to separate out the systems and the circuits and separate the panel boards. For what goes on the generator versus what doesn't go on the generator. So that one does have a little bit more of an impact on the electrical design. Um, just if you were considering the half option.
So are we saying that the nineteen eight hundred generator design should really be a different price for A, B, and C?
No, the design is, is the same.
Same, same price.
For the design, I I did ask that question and the engineer.
Although one is more work than the other.
Yeah.
I I asked the question and that was the answer I received.
So, uh, so I, I, it sounds like if we just can get, uh, Chris had a good but lengthy. Um, proposal on the table, so can we just say? Um, uh, clean it up to, I move that. There be a generator of some type on this project to be determined in the next two weeks. What that is.
Okay, that I hear a motion, I don't know who, uh, wants to.
I'll second it.
Okay, and then Buffy, I think you do roll call.
Yes.
Do you have that motion clear, Buffy?
I know, can I, can you hear it? Can we hear it again in one sentence?
It's in the recording.
Yeah, I'll have to get off the recording. Uh, that's usually how I get the specifics, I'm, I'm putting down the time that we got it.
Can we make it up again?
Yeah.
That there be a generator, what?
I moved that there be a generator on this project. And that the specifics of it be determined in two weeks with more information from Alicia and the design team. Answering our questions.
Does include or exclude the temporary roll up generator?
I think it's primarily around the temporary roll up about the cost of what a monthly subscription is.
A generator of any kind.
But I will contact the rental group or whoever to see what those, what that will cost.
But we also need to get firm information from, uh, Jeff and and Harry, Henry, and. Uh, and I think Chris asked for the electrical engineer to, uh, give us some code backup. So that we can make this decision, because it's, it's a bigger decision than just a working group. If it's setting a standard for the whole town, as Beth is saying.
Sorry, does the motion include three A, three B, and three C, or just three?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So we, for now, we still keep B on the table.
A, B, and C.
Okay.
Yep, that's, that's what I heard.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the, on the floor.
Was that Caroline that did the second?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, here we go, Claremont.
Hi.
Yerkes, I, Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
Seacor.
Hi.
Steel.
Hi.
Book.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Rupinski.
Hi.
Hannah.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Zegowitz is not here and. I'm sorry, Tom, do I take a vote from Mike Patton?
Yes.
Yes, Mike, when did you join? Joined about twenty minutes ago.
Yeah.
Before the motion was made. Okay.
All right. All right, thank you, so it passed, uh, eleven. Well, now, let me see, it's, it's eleven zero. Zero.
Okay.
All right, um, I have to apologize, I have to, I have to leave, um. I didn't expect this meeting to go this long, and I have another commitment, so I have to leave. Can we, um, is there anything more, Alicia, that you need on this?
I just want to be able to approve the generator design additional service and there those, that list of, um. Additional services that are on there, and there was a fourth one that came in late, that was.
If it came in late, we're not gonna talk about it tonight.
Okay.
We, we've got, we gotta set standards moving forward.
I understand, it's for the wastewater, though, that's the dilemma, that one's especially time sensitive, but it's, okay, so we can.
We seem to be meeting every week, so it's like, we can wait a week.
The, um, the additional services on there are the. For the furnishing consultant, this is for the group that the Fine Gold Alexander works with, the help to, they will. Help select and specify the furniture, this, uh, proposal has been showing on the budget since the beginning, so it was, uh. Um, Ellen and I kind of helped us back to see where we were standing at the time of the DD. Estimate to see if we were, and I think we are feeling comfortable recommending this, uh, given the state of the budget. There's a generator design, which, as you all just voted, we need to approve. And then there's the envelope commissioning, and this was a, we went back to the commissioning agent, asked for a. Skinny version of, you know, a, you know, a skinny version for envelope commissioning. And this, he sent a proposal through that the group reviewed, Jean.
Okay, I, I do have to leave, so I have to stop sharing, so we still have a quorum for our committee, so I apologize, but thank you all.
Thank you, Tom. I, I can share if you'll make me a co-host, Christina, I'm, I've got the packet open.
So, uh, my question is at the, at the last meeting or the meeting, two meetings ago of the working group. We said that there were a number of faulty comments in the proposal from. Who's it, Stefira's group?
Yep.
Um, that were contrary to the contract and it needed to be cleaned up, do we have a new proposal from her?
We do, and I will, I can forward that along, this, thi- this specifically about the. Um, furnishing thing, I can reshare the revised version and we'll send that in advance for the, uh, working group meeting. I guess I'm looking for specifically the generator design. One for tonight, and we can postpone the envelope commissioning if you want, and the wastewater to next meeting, because I, um. I don't think everybody, the way the, uh, I was just, that was to talk about the budget. Conceptually, to have these additional services in there. So we can now, the hypothetical budget that I had sent out, we can talk about that now that holds all these. Maybes in there. Does that make sense?
Just asked a lot of information from us. Maybe we can. Go one at a, at a time.
Yeah.
If you go back to the generator design, does the nineteen thousand eight hundred include the ten percent markup for? That's included in there.
Yes.
Okay, and, and we'll see a, um, an actual. Additional service request from Fine Gold Alexander, showing what it is that we are approving. I, in the future, I'd like to see these things that are, you know.
I, I was, I was trying not to get into the, I was, this was more of what was listed on there to talk about as a. You know, just so we could, in reviewing the hypothetical, you could see which additional services were sort of on the table to be considered, to see in the context. Of the whole budget, and I have, I can share that hypothetical budget. If people would like to see that, or I had emailed it around. But if we, the, given the things that the, that we discussed today with what is recommended. The, like I said, the generator, I had already, that was already included in the construction estimate. And the, um, the highlighted options under the alternates and the EUI recommendations. And the additional services that were listed, plus the fourth one, which isn't on that list, which is for wastewater. WP, uh, WP eleven application, um. And then there was also a late breaking one about the underslab waterproofing. Waterproofing is being held in the estimate right now. The geotechnical engineer is saying that that is not required and a vapor barrier would be appropriate. Given again that we are doing the perimeter drain system anew. And that would be over a hundred thousand dollar credit, actually, would help.
Can we vote on that one?
So.
I'll make a motion.
If you look at the, the hypothetical budget I sent out, and I did, I did add a line to that a hundred and ten for the. Uh, waterproofing, we are, you know, obviously our, that just makes our contingency better, right, because we are, or. Yeah. We're still holding the safety mouth.
And we're being advised it's not necessary.
Correct, we're being advised the waterproofing is not required. Vapor barrier is, so the delta between that is the cost, there's the savings represented, I will have the, sorry?
Just add quickly, uh, we still have, uh, waterproofing for the elevator pits. So have the blindside and everywhere else under.
And on the walls, of the walls going around.
Yeah.
But not on that.
Can you help me with the motion, because that, now, I was clear until just that last statement.
I don't know if there's necessarily, um, I guess there's a motion, I guess that if you all want to vote whether you accept. The alternates that were being recommended, which would include. Accepting vapor barrier, the recommended vapor barrier.
Instead of, instead of waterproofing.
Correct, and to accept the highlighted items on the list I sent out, plus the vapor barrier in lieu of waterproofing. And the highlighted EUI, the things to increase the EUI, which was the insulation and changes to the window modifications.
Lucia, I don't mean to be rude, but it's really hard to have a motion like that, I mean, could we just?
Could you vote to accept the hypothetical, um, budget as proposed as I had emailed out?
But we had some questions about the EUI and whether.
Right, we need some more.
Necessary, we, we don't have proper information.
We need the questions answered, we have to have the EUI answered before we can vote to accept that. Okay, and I think there's one more piece that you'll be bringing next week, Alicia, the wastewater treatment permit cost. So maybe, um, maybe what we need to produce to be mailing out Friday. You know, for next Wednesday night, uh, library working group meeting is an exact listing of the alternates. Their costs and what we would be adding to the budget, and then what our contingency cost ends up being. You know, i- if we, uh, approve the hypothetical budget that you're working on.
Okay, it would be a shortened version the, of the summary I sent out, essentially.
Short, short would be helpful because there are specific things and, and, you know, once we have the answers. Uh, to the EUI and the cost of a, a roll up generator, it'll be easier for people to make, uh, the choice. Uh, between several of the options that are in front of them.
Exactly.
Okay.
And the EUI of effects, did you say that?
Yeah, right.
Okay, okay.
But the working group is going to review the EUI, the revised report next Wednesday, and we'll have an update to the Mass Safe meeting that we'll have to. Uh, tomorrow, so we'll be able to get more information on that.
Okay. Cool.
Uh, so I, uh, there's nothing really to, I think we have, I appreciate everybody's vote on the generator, I think that sort of clarified that. Yes, we'll have a generator and we just need to, that just loosens a lot of the conversation and we just now have to figure out which one, what we're gonna do, so I appreciate that, thank you.
So let me just rapidly report that, um, the responses to our RFP for an off-site location. Um, the deadline was actually extended to Friday at eleven AM. Um, we needed to add a deadline for respondents to, um, pose questions to us and have those questions answered. And submitted to everyone who had picked up an RFP, so, um, by Friday noon, we'll know if we have responses. To that RFP and, um, then, uh, again, I'll be talking with the fire marshal, the, um. The building commissioner, um, and, um, have Jeff check the site with me, um, all three of us. So that we can assess the sites for how well they'll work for us, and then we can start to do actual. Planning and I can continue with RFPs for moving book storage and, uh, storage of some of the, um. Fine arts and, um, historical items that are housed in the library currently, so I'll be able to report more on that next week. So, since Tom had to leave, I'll continue the meeting. So the next item, as far as I see it, is approval of the warrants. Which includes. A warrant for CHA solutions for services from July twenty seven to August twenty third. At eighteen thousand six hundred and ten dollars, to approve. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Buffy?
Buffy, you're on mute.
My apologies, Claremont.
Hi.
Yerkes, I, Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
Seacor.
Hi.
Steel.
Hi.
Book.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Rupinski.
Hi.
Hannah is not here, Roberts.
Hi.
Patton.
Hi.
So passed, uh, ten zero zero.
The next item is for warrant for FAA architects, eighty percent completion of detailed design. At thirty nine thousand seven hundred seven, six. Do I have a motion to approve?
Lynn, quick question, did you say eighty percent or?
Ninety, I don't know what I said, but I meant to say ninety.
No, that's a, that's okay, I just wanted to know if it was ninety, thank you.
I had the same question.
So can I have a motion?
I'm so moved.
Can I second?
I have a second.
Fleckner and Roach did that one?
Yes.
Okay. Claremont.
Hi.
Yerkes, I, Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
Seacor.
Hi.
Seal.
Hi.
Book.
Hi.
Isleton. Wait a minute, do we have Scott?
Yep, he's muted, I, I.
They were, okay, Rupinski.
Hi.
Hannah is gone, Roberts.
Hi.
Patton.
Hi.
Ten zero zero.
Okay. Uh, the next item I see is approval of the Amplifun monthly report for July, is that correct? Yes, and here it is on the screen.
Okay.
So there's nothing, um, you know, e- especially dramatic about these reports yet. Um, you know, we're still um, paying for our design phase, um, you can see the attachments and um. You know, at this point, we're still working off of our first disbursement from the Board of Library Commissioners grant. So um, this is due every month um, on, on their uh, software. Where they're tracking our grant expenditures and our eligible costs. Okay, any questions? Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second. Mary Ann.
Yep, thank you. Claremont.
Hi.
Yerkes, I, Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
Seacor.
Hi.
Seal.
Hi.
Book.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Rupinski.
Hi.
Hannah is not here, Roberts.
Hi.
When uh, Patton.
Hi.
Ten zero zero.
Okay. Next item. Can someone explain what this is about approval to proceed to construction documents?
It's to the next phase of design, we just, they, the design team had done design development, they did a design development estimate. The estimate is proving the project to be on budget, so I'd like to be able to give the design team permission to move on.
Can we do that with the remaining items, we still have to decide in the next week again? Okay.
We need to make those decisions at the next meeting, but yes, the design team can, can get going.
Okay.
But we need that information soon.
Okay, can I have a motion then to um. Approve proceeding to the construction documents.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second. Claremont.
Hi.
Yerkes, I, Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
Seacor.
Hi.
Seal.
Hi.
Book.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Rupinski.
Hi.
Hannah, Hannah is not here, Roberts.
Hi.
Patton.
Hi.
Ten zero zero.
Are there any other items? Then um, can I have a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second it.
Is that you, Chris?
Yes.
Okay.
Nancy Cook the third.
Mike is the fourth, I like that.
I think these votes have actually been eleven zero zero, my apologies. Okay, Claremont.
Hi.
Yerkes, I, Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
Seacor. Uh, where'd Glenn go?
Hi, sorry.
Okay, um, Seal.
Hi.
Book.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Rupinski.
Hi.
Thomas gone, Jean, Roberts.
Hi.
And Patton.
Hi.
Eleven zero zero.
You're right about the eleven, Buffy.
Uh, and it is eight twelve.
Okay.
Next evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.